Yeah, of course.
No, it doesn't.
Oh, remind me.
Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Monday, December 6, 2021 at 7:00 PM at O'Neill Middle School. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on District 58's YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Ellis.
Here.
Member Hannah.
Here.
Member Harris.
Here.
Member Olchik.
Here.
Member Weiner.
Here.
And member Hughes.
Here.
Tonight, we have combined our regular business meeting with what was originally scheduled as a facilities workshop. Therefore, immediately following the spotlight presentation on facilities, we are offering a 30-minute period of public comment with an extended opportunity for the board and community communications. You do not need to submit a card for this public comment unless you wish to provide your contact information so that the board can follow up with you. If you do supply one, please label your card as facilities. On all other issues, members of the audience will have an opportunity to provide public comment to the board later on in the agenda. The board asked that anyone wishing to comment to please fill out a card on that table over there to my right and indicate the topic to be addressed. These could be placed in that basket at any time before public comment. We're going to start tonight, as we always do, with a flag salute. So I'd like to welcome the student council from Bel Air School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd now like to welcome up Principal Borschel.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. I am Brent Borschel, the principal over at Bel Air. Extremely happy to be here with you this evening to the board and to our upper administration. Thank you for your continued support of our community, of our schools, and of our students. Our students are showing us everything about persistence this year, and they're giving us some good lessons to us all about resilience. So thank you, Student Council, for being here as well. I'd love to give you a quick peek into Bel Air so that you can see how we, as a school, are working as a community to head towards our reading, math, and positive psychology goals.
Welcome to Bel Air School. I'm excited to give you a quick glimpse into what we've been doing this year and how we're moving toward our goals focused on reading, math, and positive psychology. It's been great to have our students moving throughout the building once again as they navigate their daily schedules. And we have all loved being able to return to various proven instructional practices like small group and guided instruction, along with partner work and the various contents. As part of our school improvement plan in the area of reading, teachers have continued to implement our benchmark and study sync resources. Guided instruction allows teachers to focus on key skill sets with students in all grades. Individual needs in the primary grades are being met through the Foundations of Literacy Program and addition to the work of Michael Higerty. We continue to make use of math skills and have recently begun to incorporate Lexia, which identifies and provides instruction for needed skill sets. In the area of math, our teachers are implementing bridges and big ideas. The instruction that students receive from both of these resources is quite different from what we've previously used, and the richness of classroom discussions continues to be amazing. Moving beyond the use of algorithms, students are diving deeper into concepts to extend thinking and to develop mathematical mindsets. Further practice is captured via small group or partner work and individually through the extramath and green box programs that are being used as supplements. We have started to weave the professional development that we received through Orange Frog into Bel Air as well. At the start of the year, we went out into the Bel Air community to welcome our new students with claps and cheers and to place a PTA-donated bulldog sign in their front yards. The students have also been excited to learn more about positive psychology, and more than 80 students have joined Ms. Malone's Kindness Club with the goal to spread joy and kindness to the students and staff throughout the year. For Student Council this year, each candidate developed and spoke to a kindness project that would support our school or community in a positive way, and you'll get to hear more about those this evening.
Thank you again. It's through all of these things that you've done to help us at a school level that our students are thriving. They are doing a great job. Even though there is some unfinished learning, they are catching up very quickly, and we are happy to be back in person for a full day. At this time, I would like to introduce our Student Council and specifically Mrs. Tara Fulton, one of our PTA reps.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here this evening and the opportunity to have Student Council back in our schools again. On behalf of myself and also the co-sponsor that I share this opportunity with, Mrs. Steiner, we are very excited to have our Student Council officers. Their leadership has been incredible since the start of the school year, and as Mr. Borschel had shared, each of our candidates was asked to develop a kindness project that would help spread joy and kindness throughout our school. So after they have introduced themselves, they're going to share a little slide with you this evening about their kindness project, as well as some of the projects that we already have up and running throughout this school year. So at this time, I'd like to welcome Kira Rana and ours, our president, and then also our other Student Council officers as well.
Hi, my name is Kira Rana, and I'm the president at Bel Air Elementary School. And sadly, our vice president, Thomas Nielsen, couldn't be here tonight.
I'm Alice Murha, and I'm the treasurer.
I'm Elliot Blonigan, and I'm the spirit chair.
I'm Elise Berger, and I'm the secretary. No act of kindness, no matter how small, is ever wasted. This year, Student Council members were supposed to come up with a kindness project to share with the school. My kindness project revolves around the environment and Earth Day. I want to plant trees, plants, and flowers around the school. This will not only help students get engaged in environmental work, but also brighten up our school and show it some love. I am hoping the money needed for this project could be funded by a school event, fundraiser, or restaurant night. On the trees, I am planning on planting. Students and staff can write positive notes that involve their goals, hopes, or even just saying, "I hope you have a great day." This will show people how much positive energy is flowing throughout our school. For Thomas's kindness project, his was Help the Custodians. His idea was to help the janitors by cleaning up the outside, the outside of the school. The reason I want to do this is because we used to eat outside, and there is a lot of trash. We want to take care of the ecosystem. My kindness idea was the kindness board. The kindness project is, this kindness project is a bulletin board where students or teachers can write on a sticky note, on a sticky note, something kind or nice the student said or did. Then you could stick or pin the sticky note on the board. This will represent a kindness project because later in the day, students can see if someone wrote about you, and it will make yourself proud. This board will be put up in our school January through June.
My kindness project is to help our butterfly garden and to plant colorful flowers to brighten people's day when they walk by. My kindness project will take place during May.
My kindness project is called Bling for Bulldogs. This project will take place in May and revolves around donating to dogs and other pets. There will be a drive to collect the bling for the pets at the West Suburban Humane Society. People can donate food, treats, leashes, towels, et cetera. At the end of the drive, we will take the collected items to the Humane Society. A couple of weeks before May, I will call the West Suburban Humane Society to see what they need. I'm sure this will make the dogs and cats very happy. I can do things you cannot. You can do things I cannot. Together, we can do great things.
We collected $587 for the Thanksgiving holiday. A Bel Air family privately matched our donation. We support 10 Bel Air families for the Thanksgiving holiday.
For the December events, we have two events this month, the Giving Tree and the Pencil and Eraser Sale. The Giving Tree is where each grade level, we donating items to keep families warm and reading during the winter, hats, scarves, gloves, socks, and books. And the Pencil and Eraser Sale is where each morning, Student Council members will sell holiday pencils and erasers to Bel Air students. All proceeds will go to supporting Bel Air families during the holidays.
The timeline for the kindness projects this year, so the kindness board will be January through June, and Help the Environment will be in March, Help the Custodians is in April, Bling for Bulldogs in May, and Planting Flowers is also in May. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing all of your kindness projects. They're very inspiring.
All right. They are young bulldogs, but they sure are mighty. Thank you so much for your willingness to help and to spread all of this positivity. Very, very proud of all of you. Next up, I do have one co-president from our Bel Air PTA, Nicole Smith.
Great. Good evening. My name is Nicole Smith. I am one of the co-presidents for the Bel Air PTA, along with Erin Doty, who cannot be here with me this evening. Thank you for providing the opportunity for us to showcase some of the fantastic work and support the PTA has been able to offer. Since the last time we were here to talk to you about our efforts, the world gave us a bit of a right turn, but I am proud of the community of parents, volunteers, and teachers who learn to be creative, understanding, and pivot on a dime to ensure we are enriching students' educational experiences, support the teachers in the process, and helping to build our bulldog spirit in our community. So the first area of focus are our students, of course. And so for our students, we are focused on supporting their social and academic activity to help drive bulldog spirit. The PTA, as part of this, has gifted some great bulldog masks for every student in the school, and I see two of them here today, which is great. Thank you. We also gifted all new incoming students with Bulldog Pride yard signs, which you saw as a part of Mr. Borschel's presentation, to display their school spirit. We hosted a Welcome Back to School party with a DJ, a dunk tank loaded with volunteers of teachers and Mr. Borschel to dunk, as well as free snacks and drinks. We executed junior grade books. We were able to launch Fun Lunch with both the kids and parents, greatly appreciate. Holiday parties, we just executed our Halloween party, and we're gearing up for holiday. And then we also hosted an after-school science club that has been meeting every Tuesday for about an hour. Second area of focus is our teachers, of course, and this is to show our appreciation and support for all they do. So we were able to gift all the teachers and staff with Bulldog tie-dye t-shirts to wear on Spirit Day. We hosted a Welcome Back breakfast for them in the lounge the first day of school, and we're hosting a holiday snack goodie backdrop in the teacher's lounge the week before winter break. And for our community outside of the student events and the fundraising I'll talk about in a second, we are also hosting a Toys for Tots Drive, currently in execution, and we executed a playground meet and greet for the incoming kindergarten families so they can get to know each other before school started. Last but not least is our fundraising efforts. This not only creates fun and excitement in the community, but it also helps to support all of our student and teacher events. One of our biggest fundraisers in the past two years have been our restaurant nights. So that's a good suggestion. We've had six different restaurant nights to date that support local restaurants, earning over $1,900, and we have a few more planned in 2020. We also have a Bulldog Birthday banner that families can rent to celebrate their kiddo's birthdays and show our bulldog spirit in their front yard. For the holidays, we launched our first ever minted fundraiser, and this is where if any family gets holiday cards or printed greetings, they receive a discount for their purchase, and then Minted gives a percent back to the school. And we also have a Fun and Winter Treat fundraiser that does the same, and we always encourage our families to order on Amazon Smiles where a percent goes back to the household or to Bel Air of household purchases. The back half of the year and what we're getting ready for is our trivia night in February, where hopefully this one will be back in person. We did virtual last year, which was a lot of fun, but this one is planning to be back in person. We will be hosting our second annual golf outing in May. And last but not least, we have formed a new playground committee, which you will hear from later on today, so I won't steal your thunder, but we are really excited and pleased that that group has come up and running here in a short amount of time. So as we look to the back half of the school year, we will continue some of the activities we talked about, but we're working on adding some things back in as guidance allows us. Book fair, variety show, in person or virtually, perhaps a few field trips maybe, and a year end field day, so fingers crossed. So in closing, I'd like to say thank you, a big thank you. It takes a village to do what we're able to do for our students and our community, and I'd like to just send a huge thank you to all the PTA volunteers, the PTA exec committee, the parent volunteers, teachers, and staff, and of course, Mr. Borschel, for being super flexible, allowing our creativity, and being kind as we all navigate through these uncharted waters for the past two years. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Listed on tonight's agenda are four communications.
Did they, did the kids get their t-shirt?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. You gotta get the t-shirt.
Listed on tonight's agenda are four communications received by the board. Are there any additional communication board members would like to share at this time? All right. That brings us then to the spotlight on our schools, which is focusing on facilities tonight. I'd like to welcome up Todd Grayfall.
Good evening. This worked, and then. Okay. Good evening. Kevin Barto is also going to be assisting me in this piece. Normally, this time of year, the district has a finance workshop. With our five-year planning structure and with capital assets being a huge part of it and working through the master's facility plan, we thought we would switch it up a little bit this year and bring to the board a capital plan or a capital facilities update with some review and suggestions for the next set of work to be done, because those will need to get out onto the street to be bid out in short order. And so we lead as we work into our budgeting process for fiscal year '23. That starts July 1 of 2022 with a capital review. Just to kind of, to refresh the board and the community, back in 2012, the district started a facilities assessment and review, a comprehensive review of all of the facilities of the district. From that point, 2018, 2017, 2018, went into a, another group in developing the master's facility plan, and that's where we had staff, parents, community members tour every inch of every building with architects reviewing the facilities and developing what came to be, that was presented in the August of, of 2019, of the master's facilities plan. As we can see up there, the plan had an estimated cost of $245 million. 115 of that being maintenance or deferred maintenance, 60-plus of security, health, safety, and air quality issues. This is a, just kind of breaks it out as to how we had kind of planned the number of years as to what needed to be looked at in the first one to four, five to eight, and onward, including age of roofs, asphalt replacement, and so forth, and those type of things. From there, the Citizens Task Force was created, and that's 40 members of the community put together to review what, it was a different group, what that group had come up with and to start to review and come to something that, because the district doesn't have $245 million available nor capacity to borrow at that level to do that work, where is our focus, where is our priority? That Citizens Task Force came into creating the next set, which is a slimmed-down version or a condensed, or the priority of work that needs to be accomplished, and that came down to the $179 million, which is a number that's been talked about for some time. Obviously, the Citizens Task Force had to take a bit of a pause when we went into COVID in March of 20, but that's where we came from, the 250 or 245 to the 179. And looking at and focusing those as to the deferred maintenance piece, the safety and health, and configuration, and the number of years and how those things would go, with also the roof replacements as to when the current roofs would start to need that replacement schedule. Building envelope is a big thing. We're going to talk about that in a little bit, and Kevin Barto is going to go into more detail than I am, but building envelope is a huge, important piece to ensure that you don't have water intrusion and water issues into the building that you have, yeah, that gets that you don't have water intrusion and water issues into the building that you have, yeah, that gets into air quality and has a way of deteriorating the building and causing a lot more damages. We, anyone who owns a house that has water problems at all is well aware of and and knows how to deal with. So, those are the areas that we kind of look to focus on. They're not always the most exciting pieces to talk about, but they're important to protect the large capital asset of the community, and that is our 13 high, 13 school buildings. Things that were not included, and this is example of what you see tonight on the agenda for approval with two playgrounds. There is things that were not included in that 179 million. The work and conversion and what would become of the ASC and Longfellow and administration facilities, playground updates and asbestos abatement is not included into that number. Other things that were changed and brought in and reviewed, taken out of to get from the 245 to the 179, site improvements, interior lighting, exterior lighting, storage, flooring, ceiling replacements and repairs and lockers and so forth. So, those are items that are not in to get down to the 179 number. You know, and those are areas and we can talk, we'll talk a little bit later into the presentation about how we are coming up and looking continually working to come up with these formats. And some of them are unfortunately, yeah, fundraising efforts outside of where community, you know, parents and community members are working on the playground updates as way of funding some of those pieces. Okay. I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Good evening, everyone. So, as we review projects from the summer, I'm not going to go through the list here behind me, but you know, the district restructured its outstanding debt and borrowed about 3.35 million worth of, of course, dollars worth of funding to complete the projects that we needed to do. The main project on there was the Pierce Downer roof, which was the most significantly costly item on that list. And you can see here at the bottom, the total 3.2, just under slightly what we borrowed, so. Todd mentioned before, we have a couple items later in the agenda on playgrounds. Playgrounds, while there's many things in our school buildings that are important, playgrounds are a conversation that people are very interested in. And so, there in the left column, we have the great work that the community has done to date of the various places. And then we've got a couple more in the works. We've already heard a couple of months ago from Pierce Downer. Tonight, we have Bellaire and Kingsley. Still have a couple remaining schools, Indian Trail, Fairmount to go through. Those playground groups have talked about getting started, but their playgrounds are in pretty good shape, so it's not like they have to get started today or next month. So, much like the last couple of years, this slide is really important. We've tried to focus on, like Todd mentioned, building envelope, health, life, safety. Any items that would potentially get erupted or affected in the master plan, we don't want to target those, obviously, have to redo them. So, in anything that Todd mentioned that was a reduction, we need to think about providing solutions for. So, those four bullet points are very important as we talk about the facilities in the workshop here. As we look forward for the summer work for upcoming this next school year, we developed a list of projects that are priorities of focus. And that total came to over $6 million. We don't have $6 million, so we needed to kind of pare that down a little bit. On this list, we talked about the fire alarms, masonry, flooring, exterior doors and pavement work. So, with that, we just threw in another slide here that shows kind of by building. This is more for the packet. I'm not going to run through it. Sometimes we get questions about, you know, not just masonry, but you know, which buildings are we talking about masonry? So, this has a breakdown by school location for the projects. So, we can then set down and then we come with a slide here of recommended work for summer of 22. Basically, a third of that is what we talked about putting into masonry. It's something that, as Todd mentioned, maybe you don't have to do it every other year, but there is a cycle that comes up that you need to address it. And we're to the point, especially at these two schools listed, Puffer and Fairmount, where we're seeing a lot of brick deterioration. So, we have a lot of cracking bricks. People of masonry homes, you might be familiar with the term of tuck pointing or repointing. So, we're to the point where you actually have mortar joints that are void of material, which is going to just continue to deteriorate the brick. So, it is a significant portion of the work. Fire alarm replacement, the district targeted many fire alarms around 2014, 15. Highland and Puffer were two that we still need to do. The flooring replacement, we have continued with the school maintenance project grant applications over at Henry Puffer School. The Henry Puffer does require abatement underneath the older carpet. And so, we propose if the school maintenance project grant comes through that we would tackle another area of that. Exterior doors and hardware at Fairmount and various areas of pavement, especially focusing at Hillcrest and Puffer. You know, I'll turn it back over to Todd. Talk a little more about the financing end of things.
I want to go back before we go to this step. Oh, that's all I want to do. So, one of the pieces on there is 1.16 million dollars of lighting, LED lighting update. And this gets into the whole, the funding format. We, we have a locked-in electric rate. We know that in 2024, if we don't do something with the current rates, we, it's one of these items of you're lucky, you're better lucky than good. We were lucky in that we were, we locked in a rate for our futures electrical right at a point where the market has not gone back down to that rate since. That wasn't by design. It was, you know, by working with our vendor and our consultants. But we were, we had a number that we hit and we were able to lock in for as long as we could go. We know that if we don't do something by 2024, our electrical rates will increase $200,000 or more a year at the current rate, if the rates don't drop. I don't know as if that is going to happen, but you know, things have not decreased in some time on some of those areas. It is one of the things that we continually watch and look for. It is hopeful with some of the new structure of funding through either the federal government or the state that there will be some more incentives that will come available that will make it advantageous for us to start working on those areas and doing some things. Some of those may come quick, some of those may take some time, but know that we are continually watching that piece and looking for a way of alternative funding for that outside of bonds or operational dollars. But we have a time window that we know we're going to have an operational cost that will incur. If, you know, we don't do something to try to reduce our store, our usage. So, and what most vendors will tell you about electrical is always find a way to continually reduce before you do solar panels and production and things like that, because the reduction piece is always more advantageous for, for you at that point. So, I wanted to point that out that that is something we continually work on. And there always have some, there's some possibilities of a different funding. As we said, we have a large number of deferred maintenance issues, safety concern in safety areas. Obviously, the focus of the items that we're looking at going forward aren't the most, you know, exciting, not STEM labs, not, you know, renovation of the food service facility, you know, the economic, econ classes here and those type of things, which we would very much like to do, but more of a preservation of our buildings, but also safety and security and those items that have popped up on our last inspection by by the ROE through the health, life, safety issues. Funding format. Last year's work was done by the restructuring of our debt and the issuance of a $3 million bond 2021. This next summer's work, we throughout the process of, of going through the Longfellow sale, said we would look at and hold two and a half million dollars of the proceeds of that property for this work for the next summer, for summer of 22. We were very fortunate in the, in the price that it came in at at 4.1. And so, at that point, we said, let's, you know, we can move that up to $3 million. There is a remaining piece to that. Obviously, you said, well, Todd, you got 4 million and what's happened with the extra money? Given fund balance and our low fund balance framework that we have and our fund balance policy that is in place to ensure that we don't have to do short-term borrowing, as well as that we don't have a rainy day fund for something fails and we have to work on something. If we have to do something immediate, that's, that's a larger ticket item. It's our recommendation that we hold in advance that million dollars and put it into the fund balance at this point in time. And the fund balance policy piece provides a fair amount of expenditure that we can keep it operationally, but also it has a way of keeping a fund balance that in the event that something does arise that we have to address on an emergency basis, that's a larger ticket. We aren't having to go out and borrow bonds that we won't be repaying for several years and have a higher rate. So, it helps kind of control our destiny in that aspect. There is still state funds for playgrounds. We continually work with Representative Murray, Stava Murray's office to go through that. We did have the LC era playground that we have now wrapped up and concluded in the paperwork. We were told recently that that is a six-year window. So, we are continually working to figure out how and when the state prioritizes those funds and makes available to us for us to, to apply as part of the playground work and how that would work out. Obviously, as we talked about, and what you're going to see is the fundraising from the community and the amazing ability for our community to raise and to help in that process. The maintenance grants that Kevin Barto talked about, they're a small piece, they're $50,000 with a match. So, the district puts out $50,000 in operations, budgeted for the district, from the district to 50,000 from the state. And we continually work at items like asbestos abatement or flooring that we won't have to redo again, but need to be continually worked on and being done. We will work, and one of the pieces we're going to need to look at is, is part of our five-year planning, working to put aside an allocation annually for capital work. That is not something the district has done at a significant level. Given the fact that the downtown Tiff is coming off after 23 years and having access to that property and that valuation increase, as well as the potential of a higher inflation number for CPI for growth and tax levy. The following year may have a way of allowing the district to build some balance in that annually we are budgeting for to help address some of these capital items. As I talked about the rebates and incentives for energy reductions. And then anything that may come up through the infrastructure bills, and we will continually look and work with whomever to see how we can utilize any of those aspects. There is money set aside for electrical reduction and/or production in the state budget. I don't think it's been shown as exactly how that's going to work out yet. But we also understand that there's some probably coming from the federal eventually, so. And then if, you know, the community goes to and works the referendum, obviously, that is the lion's share. You know, all of these items, all of these, these pieces above that last one don't equal out to what, you know, what a referendum or what that level is to do some of the work that needs to be done in the district.
So, the plan to move forward is work towards creating documents to put out for bid with our architect white company. And so that the board could approve them at the February or March board meeting for the summer work of 2022. It is becoming clear with the economy and the job market and the supply market that earlier is better and we are late now today. By the way, this is the earliest we've talked about this in the district in some time to do summer work. Usually, we're off another 30, 60 days into this. Next year, we will come to you, if we're going to do work and depend on referendum and so forth, we would be coming to you probably in November and talk about if there's anything that's going to happen the next November, the next summer just to be moving it, and we will continually work that process so that we're doing it earlier and getting it out ahead of anyone else. Continue the monitoring for operation, you know, for, for options, incentives and so forth. So, with that, I'm going to go back to the work that we're looking at, and if there are any questions from the board.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Todd, I'd like to jump right in. I missed my question. First of all, thank you both for the presentation. A lot of great information there. Appreciate all your hard work. That slide that you were just showing, the recommended work to be bid, we have obviously a very, very long list of capital projects that we're looking to get done. And we have a very finite amount of, of funds to be able to do that work. I know you went into some detail, but we just go a little bit deeper when you're talking about why these projects of all the things that we need to do, how did you prioritize these over everything else?
I'll let Kevin answer that one. Thanks, Member Harris, for the question. So, when we're looking at these projects, a lot of it goes back to what? There was a slide with the four bullet points of health, life, safety. So, anything that's come up in an inspection, whether it's our tenure or annual review, anything that's could potentially impact the building itself, whether it's indoor air quality or mold or anything like that, so roof leak or masonry leak. So, one of the things we did was look really hard at masonry, because that's something the district really hasn't done in a really long time, much longer than the roof cycle. And so, the masonry is one of those things that if we don't address it, it is just going to cost us more money down the road. And, and you know, everybody can think of the, you know, the stream against the mountain analogy, right? You know, I mean, it does, natural rainfall does take wear and tear on the building itself. And so, there is maintenance that is required to do that. So, that is a substantial portion of the, of the project. We also have, much like last year, some areas of pavement that are a priority. So, we look across the district at, you know, which ones are we constantly having to do pothole patch? You know, or we may get concerns from parents or teachers about a certain building or area of a building. So, we have a matrix that I've rated the pavement on, and Hillcrest is definitely at the top of that right now. Spoke early in the presentation about the fire alarm, so that is a, you know, code requirement. Those systems are older, especially the one at Puffer. And so, we are having difficulty with our repair vendors trying to maintain a very old system. So, when we get phone calls and usually I pass those phone calls along to Todd, like there's a chance we might not be able to repair this. Those are concerning, you know, to hear from the vendor on, on those topics. So, that's a scenario there with the fire alarms. Exterior doors and hardware is also just the main door of Fairmount. I'm not sure if anybody's been in there recently, but it's just, it's a really poor door compared to any other main entrance. And it's only a matter of time before you get the phone call from the principal that we have a major problem there at Fairmount. So, so back to your question, Member Harris, these are things we look at globally. so back to your question, Member Harris, these are things we looked at globally that what could potentially impact us tomorrow or cost us, you know, significantly more down down the road. And that slide that talks about the four bullet points of health, life, safety, avoiding any of the master plan items, that's what we focused on the entire time.
The other thing, just to jump in there, remember Harris, I want to piggyback off of something that Kevin talked about. That mountain stream analogy that that he was using. I've seen that play out in a previous district when I worked in Hinsdale one eighty one and the envelope to Hinsdale Middle School was ignored and ignored for years and years and years. And what ended up happening at that particular school is we had to close that school because mold had creeped in behind everything. And I can tell you when you're in that territory, that is not a a fun thing to go through. It is a very costly thing to go through. Hinsdale ended up spending millions and millions of dollars just trying to fix that building after ignoring the envelope. And then eventually, after spending millions of dollars, they ended up tearing it down and building a brand new school. And that is certainly something that we always want to avoid. Exterior doors as well is another thing where you can get that moisture and everything creeping in. And I do want to reiterate what Kevin said about the doors in particular at Fairmount. They are very old and not only from a weather perspective, but also from a security perspective, we want to make sure that those doors are in order. So we were also very careful not to put things on this list. And when I commend our architects, I know White and Company is here this evening working with us about, here's all the things we're looking at a potential referendum. The last thing that we want to do is fix something only to have it have to be redone if we do pass a potential referendum. So that was another reason we put certain things on the list and others may not make it on the list. It's not that those things don't have to get done. It's we didn't want to pay for the same thing twice.
Kevin, you might want to stay up because mine's a question. So on something like the fire alarm replacement, that system, does that include, do we have to do any electrical upgrades to those buildings to have new systems put in? Or can they currently handle that?
So we so we would not have to really do significant electrical work. Fire alarm work falls in electrical trade.
Right.
But we we would have to obviously follow current building code. So that would be a lot more devices than what we'd see now. And also at the main entrance would have a masked communication speaker like is now required by code. But we wouldn't have to necessarily upgrade the electrical system just for the fire alarm replacement.
I mean, that'd be something I think I saw that on the list for future state potential for things. And then question number two, I know that asbestos abatement isn't part of the master facilities plan consideration, but when we're doing things like flooring replacement, et cetera, is that part of that? Because I know I know about asbestos. If it's if it's contained, you're okay. But in scenarios like what we had, where we have like a leak in the ceiling and then it engages, there's there's asbestos wrapped pipes or in a tile replacement or flooring replacement. Are the asbestos abatements included in those projects? Or we know there's going to be asbestos?
Correct. So where we know that it is, we did include in the overall plan for that to include the portion of abatement in the flooring project. So that project was significantly very high and and a good probably five hundred thousand of that was attributed strictly to the full abatement of that before you would come in with a new flooring. So much like like you referenced last year when we had the puffer flooring or even here at O'Neal, we did two classrooms that tested positive underneath the carpet for asbestos. So those costs were included in that. To your point on the pierced downer leak or any other inaccessible place, that's where it does get a little more difficult. And we'll have to do some more homework as we get into the master plan for that. But for these sets of projects, it's pretty straightforward as to where that is at and do we have to do that abatement as part of that?
Okay, so for these particular ones, they're included in any asbestos abatement that we know we need to do is included in these particular projects.
The only the only case might be if for some reason we came up in the fire alarm project that we had to make a penetration through an area of something like that.
Right.
We may trigger some sort of monitoring at that time. But it wouldn't be like we need to abate a certain area just to put in the fire alarm.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I I have a question. In the work, summer work planning slide versus the recommend work to be bid. Most of the projects transferred over to the next page, but one with the flooring replacement at Puffer. Because considering it's one point five nine million dollars for the replacement, the two hundred thousand, is that just so that you're you're just doing a portion of the building? What what you're going to pick? A couple of classrooms to do? What? Why is there a difference? And why is it only two hundred? Is that all you can afford?
Correct. We we don't have the finances right now to support the full project of that whole force first floor. If you imagine from the preschool wing all the way through
Million times.
Yeah. All the way through the middle of the building and down to the primary site. So we wouldn't have that kind of financing right now with the, like you referenced, the number. So it would be doing a portion of the building utilizing the project grant. We felt very strongly that that is a strong application to the state that, you know, we have old asbestos flooring and and we feel that that grant opportunity is a good use of that grant application.
You might not have the answer to this, so sorry to put you on the spot. How many buildings are left that have carpet?
So
For being one of them, because I know I walked it.
Correct. It's mostly the first floor now at Puffer and then also here at O'Neal. O'Neal has carpet that's, you know, thirty some years old also. Actually, Puffer has two layers of carpet over the old tile. So but those are the two areas. We still have carpet in other areas like LRCs and and those places. But as far as having in hallways.
School, yeah.
Yeah, for school.
So there's two schools. So O'Neal in some parts and then Olive Puffer.
And then Bel Air and LCR open concept schools will also be fully carpeted.
But new carpet.
Newer, yes.
Newer.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll just name this. It's the holiday season. We're not being greedy. We're talking about flooring, fire alarms, pavement. These are, these are basic things for an aging district. And so for anybody that's here listening, we are just scratching the surface on maintenance needs across the district. We are trying to piecemeal it as we go summer to summer with the funds that we can allocate and continue to provide as many of our services to students as we can. And so just just to name the the reality of what we're talking about here. These are not the things that end up on holiday wish lists. These are things that you need to do to be able to continue to run a functioning district. So just thank you for the hard work. Appreciate the presentation. It's not easy to pick one project over another, but I appreciate the way that you prioritize.
Thank you.
I just want to underscore. This is why it was so important that we took a look at our debt in restructure that we took a look at our assets to see what we could offload both in terms of the building and then other things in surplus that we're selling. But as Karat is alluding, this is not a long term solution. These things do have to get done sooner rather than later. But we certainly are going to have to continue to have conversations with our community about a long term plan. When you're talking about supporting now thirteen schools and one additional building, they do have to be. You you have to upkeep them and you and there's a lot of maintenance involved in that. And it is expensive and it's not getting cheaper. And so again, that's why this potential referendum is a very important conversation we have to have with our community to set the direction moving forward.
One, you know, one of the, that's what I had. One of the things, you know, we talked about the different financing and and areas that funds are coming from. You know, we have a very large mountain to to climb. And we're going, you know, we've been taking steps. You know, the the whole, the whole idea is to like continually keep moving up. You know, there's only so much we can do with what we have. But it's important for us to continually keep moving up. Because you're always working against that that weight of inflation and that weight of age on these things and and not moving forward just continually adds to it. So.
Anything else?
I just want to say thank you to all the teams working on this. It's a lot of a lot of work. I live in a nineteen oh seven home. I understand the deterioration aspect of things and deferred maintenance and inheriting deferred maintenance. And, you know, they've been doing a great job keeping our schools up and going. But, you know, it's very clear as we keep going on that we're just hitting this precipice. So thank you for all that you have done to keep us going this long. It's a lot of work, I know.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are now at a part with our first public comment with extended opportunity for the Board of Education and Community Communications with an opportunity to discuss the facility presentation we just saw. The board is allocating thirty minutes timeframe for this extended opportunity with the board. Anyone wishing to address the board is asked to state their name in the school attendance area. Please limit your comment to three minutes so that everyone has a fair opportunity to speak. We ask everyone to be respectful of time and be respectful of others and otherwise abide by board policy. If you would like us to follow up, please do submit a card and just label it facilities. All right, at this time, is there anybody that would like to speak on the topic of facilities? Okay, thank you. We will then move on now to the reports to the board. First up is our superintendent report with Dr. Russell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. And thank you for those who are listening online. I'd like to start off with an update on curriculum and instruction. It's hard to believe, but soon Monday, January third, we will have one of our four institute days. This day is the Monday after winter break, so kids do not come back until Tuesday. On that day, we will have a presentation from a keynote speaker, Jimmy Cassis, and we also will have several other professional development opportunities led by District Fifty Eight staff, including administrators and teachers, and we're really looking forward to that professional development. Also, just as a reminder, the first trimester concluded on November nineteenth, so middle school grades are available online. Middle school grades are only available online unless a parent or request a paper copy and then we're happy to send that report card home. And then our elementary students will be bringing their report cards home later this week on Thursday, December ninth. Just a reminder, when we look at report card grades, they offer one snapshot in time. And certainly this year, you will see the impact of the pandemic. But slowly but surely, as Brent Borshelt alluded to earlier in the Bel Air presentation, we are continuing to close that gap. We're continuing to catch up. And our teachers have had really good quality parent teacher conferences and reflecting accurately where students are currently at in terms of academics and social emotional learning on that report card. So we'd like to thank our teachers for getting those out and thank you for their parents for the partnership. Also, again, as a reminder, we did send out surveys to our families and our staff on our equity audit that was sent out last Friday. If anyone would like to see the student questions, that will, those are available in our district office. That survey will be administered the Thursday prior to winter break. So if anybody wants to see that, you are welcome to come to the district office. We're happy to show you those questions. The reason we don't send that out ahead of time is we really want to keep the integrity of the survey. If you send out a survey ahead of time, then the questions get discussed and the results can get skewed. However, we do always want to be transparent. District Fifty Eight, people are welcome to come and ask questions about that survey. And so if they'd like to see it, please feel free to stop by our district office and Justin Sissel or another member of our team will be happy to walk through that with you. In terms of finance, December is tax levy month. We already went ahead and passed our tax levy. But the chief school business official, Todd Dreifah, will be hand delivering that over to the county clerk. So we're in compliance as a reminder. The tax levy is due by the last Tuesday in November every year. In terms of technology, just a heads up that we are starting to run into supply chain issues with replacement parts. It's becoming more and more challenging to find those replacement parts. We have many things on order. The reason why we want to bring that to the board's attention is at the conclusion of this school year, we have device renewals that are up. As Todd kind of alluded to in his last presentation, we typically wouldn't bring those up until the spring and then ask the board to vote on it. But given the supply chain issues that we're having, we're going to really accelerate that process. And we expect by February, the latest March, bringing to the Board of Education a recommendation for device renewal. Because depending on how the board votes, we will certainly want to have enough time to get those placed with the hope that they would arrive by the start of the school year. I don't want to paint a dire picture that, you know, we're in deep trouble with technology. But you're at the end of a cycle and things start to break in that last year. And so James is doing a great job with his team staying on top of things. But we do want to just make sure that the board is aware that we're going to be accelerating that process to proactively try and protect ourselves from some of those supply chain issues that will inevitably come up. Okay, in student services. If you've been paying attention to your emails that you receive from our team, COVID cases are on the rise in District Fifty Eight. There is no way, you know, or or no way to avoid that, especially when you look at the numbers in Downers Grove, when you look at the numbers across Illinois and quite frankly, across the country. Our priority in District Fifty Eight remains in person instruction. And we are going to do everything we can to continue with in person instruction. We are in constant communication with the DuPage County Health Department, reporting our positive cases. And we have every mitigation called for in the guidance that we're able to provide in our district in place. Through all of our consultation with the Health Department, they have been very appreciative of our reporting and everything that we are doing. We have had a couple of outbreaks declared. And when you do have an outbreak declared, it doesn't necessarily mean that school has to go remote. In fact, what it means is they check and they they're going to see, is your district capable of still having in person instruction? So they'll ask us things like, do you have enough staff? Are you able to contact trace? Are you able to provide social distancing? Do you have universal masking? Do you have optional testing on site? If all the answers to those questions are yes, then it is more than likely the DuPage County Health Department is going to allow you to continue with in person instruction. They may ask for an additional mitigation, which is offering testing twice a week to all staff in those impacted by the outbreak. I also want to be clear that an outbreak doesn't necessarily mean that it's spreading at school. It could, it could not. It just means that through contact tracing, we can't determine exactly where the source is. And so therefore, they may declare it an outbreak if it's ten percent or more of your school or three or more individuals in a classroom. And that can include the staff member. So to date, we have had two outbreaks declared at Fairmount and two outbreaks declared at Hillcrest School, one of those being a SASSIT classroom. When we do get outbreaks declared, it's usually retroactive, meaning that sometimes we get notified that an outbreak, as was the first one at at Hillcrest, a month after it was over. And there's nothing that we have to do. They just say you had an outbreak, continue on. The more recent ones, they are more active, but even the today, we were just notified of another outbreak at Fairmount that took place prior to Thanksgiving. So again, that's why it's so important that we continue with our mitigation measures. I will also say that when you see rising cases, we also see calls for more measures that are in addition to the guidance. And then we still continue to see calls for getting rid of the measures that are in place. It's almost a a no win situation for a school district to be in. What we have said consistently through the start of the pandemic up to today is that we are going to continue to follow the guidance. We are not going to put on more than what the public health experts tell us to do. But we're also not going to take away what we're required to do because that would jeopardize our recognition status. And it could expose the district to a great deal of liability potentially. You know, make our staff and students sick, which is not what we want to do. So we're going to continue with a course that we're on prioritizing in person instruction and working with the DuPage County Health Department. We have spent a great deal of time. I want to compliment all of our nurses in our buildings. Our building principals are doing a phenomenal job. Jessica Stewart and her team at the district office, Megan Hewitt and her communications. And I would ask the community, regardless of how you feel on this issue, please do not yell and scream at the school staff. They are only doing their jobs and they're doing a really great job. What we're trying to do is to make sure that we keep kids in school and give them the best education possible. And that would be my my wish to the community. We have been the recipients, especially with the uptick of a lot of angry calls, a lot of angry emails on all sides of the issue. Our staff is working extremely hard and I would just ask the community, continue to be kind to our staff, know that they're doing everything they can to keep kids in school. Terms of public relations, we are very blessed to be in the town of Downers Grove, Woodridge and Oakbrook during the holiday season. We continue to be blown away by the amount of generosity that our community shares with us during the holiday season to help those out in need. We have so many great community partnerships from our education foundation to the Village of Downers Grove, to the neighboring municipalities, but there are many this year that I'd like to highlight who we're actively working with to make sure that no one goes hungry or no one needs anything during the holiday season. So blessings in a backpack from all of our PTAs. We want to thank them. The Knights of Columbus from Saint Joe's, Emmanuel Lutheran Church, Downers Grove Roadrunners, Good Shepherd Lutheran Church, Helping Hands, the Helping Hands, The Moose Lodge, the USDA for free meals. And then there are so many anonymous community members that are helping us, and I am certain that I've probably left a few off of that list. And so, Megan and I will continue to thank them in our newsletters. But because of the generosity of our families, no child should ever go without a coat, hat, gloves, a meal, all those necessary supplies that many of us are able to take for granted. And so, we're very fortunate to work with all these community partners. And on behalf of a grateful school district, I want to say thank you to them. Winter break is coming out. I'm sure all the children can tell you the exact date that it's going to start, but I'll send it to you or I'll share it with you right now. During the weeks of December twentieth and December twenty-seventh, District Fifty-Eight will be off for winter break. The district office, though, however, will remain open. We will be open on December twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth. And again, school is scheduled to resume on Tuesday, January fourth. So, on behalf of all of us in District Fifty-Eight, we wish everyone happy holidays and we hope you have a great break. That concludes my report.
Can I make one comment? I don't think you adequate, I don't think you adequately thanked the staff for the COVID communications. Thank you so much for the long hours of being so thorough and being transparent and sending out letters and posting them online. I've seen on social media, people talking about transparency and whatnot. I went and did some digging myself this weekend. The neighboring districts, you can't find the COVID dashboard or letters anymore. Some, some schools don't even send letters out when there's a case. So, to everyone listening, I just want them to know that what we do here, what you guys are doing, not me, but what you guys do is above and beyond what a lot of other districts in our surrounding areas do. And it's not unnoticed, or I understand the monumental workload that it adds to what your regular job is too. You have other things to do other than these letters. So, I just want to say thank you so much.
No, thank you. And like I said, we've got a great team that works extremely hard, but I will echo that. All cards on the table. Sometimes it's frustrating when I'm on the other end of a call and someone's saying, you're not being transparent with these COVID communications. And I have seven school-aged children, and I've never once received a positive notification in the last two years from my kid's school district. And I can share that we do go above and beyond, but we're held to a high standard, and that's okay. I want to continue to be held to a high standard. But I do want to share with our community that we have done everything we possibly can to be as transparent and as forthcoming with our community. There are times, though, where people will ask for information that we simply cannot give them. I cannot tell them who is the positive staff member. I cannot tell them who is the positive case. I cannot tell them exactly what symptom they have. And so, sometimes when people don't get that information, they will go to social media. But what is extremely helpful on social media is when people will then point them back to the district or correct that. That is extremely helpful. But it does just kind of underscore how much extra work is going on, especially at the building level with these communications. So, again, I know I've got a couple principals in the audience as well. We want to thank them for their hard work because they're doing a great job along with the staff.
Thank you.
I absolutely mirror Tracy's thoughts on this. It's unbelievable the amount of communication given around these matters, and it's, I think, incredibly important to do so. And I've been thinking about this a lot because in these kind of scenarios where it's go remote, don't go remote, stay in school, don't stay in school. We have always, always, and I've watched the Board prior to me being on the Board, it's always been, go with what the applicable experts to our district are telling us to do. And we've consistently stayed with DuPage County Health Department. Beyond what, you know, in some instances, it's going to be beyond what I personally am comfortable with. And in some instances, it's going to be right in line with where I would want it to be. And constantly and consistently, I support the district and the administration and their reliance on the experts. And I go with that always, and I think that you guys are doing such a wonderful, fantastic job for the students. I am curious, just one item that I think we should maybe look into is why, and I can assume why, the DuPage County Health Department is delayed in declaring the outbreaks. I think that that's an important thing to maybe try to figure out with them. I think it has to do with the resurgence and how much volume they're having. But it'd be nice to get a little bit more, less retroactive and a little more. But I don't think that it impacts the end game anyway, because the questions are going to be the same. We're going to have the same answers. We are fully masked. We're using the mitigation strategies. We have these things in place. And I think the answer will always wind up being the same from the DuPage County Health Department in that your mitigation strategies are appropriate. But I'd like to know, maybe, why are they?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And Jessica and I have talked a lot about that, and some of this is just our opinion. Some of it has been shared. I think the DuPage County Health Department is going to move, first of all, they're not staffed to handle everything properly either. But if they know a district has certain mitigation things in place already, they are more likely to put that district on the side, not that they're not reviewing those cases. Because of every positive case, it gets immediately reported. Multiple cases, you fill out a outbreak questionnaire. You may not hear back from them from a while regarding that, but it is always done right away. And if you have those mitigation strategies outlined that I shared, you're right, the end game is usually going to be the same. We have seen, though, from the Health Department, when they have to move faster because they need certain answers, they certainly do move faster in those type of emergency situations. I also think part of the reason for the retroactive labeling is more for record-keeping and keeping stats at the Health Department. But certainly, and I know Jessica can speak to that, there have been times within minutes we get a call back from the Health Department if they really need information. And they're also very receptive to us when we call, which we are certainly appreciative of. And that includes the Director Karen Aiella. When I need to get ahold of Karen, she responds back to me. So, we have talked a lot about that. It would be nicer, especially, I think, for some of our families to have that immediate notification. But I think they move at the pace that they're able to, but also if it's an emergency, they won't hesitate to accelerate it.
Well, and I think it goes to kudos to the administration for continuing to keep those lines of communication very open and to have that collaborative relationship with the Health Department, and that's a great.
Although I will confess, I am looking forward to the day where I'm not calling the DuPage County Health Department.
Where you're not, where you're not the liaison to the Health Department anymore.
Alright, thank you. And now, we're going to move on to the monthly business and investment and treasures report with Todd Dreifah.
I've used my allocated time for the evening. You have the year-to-date report. This is kind of our high cash point from this point. You know, we've received the first half of property taxes in. We get the second half for the year, the last fifteen, thirty days of the fiscal year in June. So, at this point, we have what we have. We continually get state aid and so forth. But from this point, we continually spend, but don't have quite the revenue flow that we did in, you know, from the, from the fall taxes. Although, all in all, we are in good shape compared against last year and where we're trending. Again, one of the issues is always down as a bit from normal pre-COVID times is the transportation. That's picking up as they're getting a chance to bill. I'm going to presume that at your January board meeting, you'll have, you know, they'll have some time to catch up on their billing. And transportation companies have been stressed to the limit on getting through and keeping, keeping up with the demand. Couple of items on the agenda for approval this evening. We have the TRS resolution. The Board has received updates on that. This is a 457 plan that the TRS has been mandated to create. And we have been mandated to pass a resolution to participate. The district does have a 403B and 457 plan as well for employees to choose from. We hope this will go well. Reporting is still not quite set up, as we understand it, for TRS to talk and communicate back and forth. But we are moving forward and continually working with them to do what we need to do. You have surplus items as we continually work to consolidate and liquidate some items that have been in storage for some time. And the moving service bid for move that happens towards, at the end of this month out of Longfellow into the new maintenance district facility at the formal, a former ASC building on Sixty-third Street. Other than that, there are questions?
Yeah, Todd, I was going to ask this when we got to fifteen C, the, when we, when we were going to vote on the TRS participation. I guess I have one bit of confusion on it, and that is, we offer a 457. And with this new plan would be administered by the TRS. And it has a mandatory three percent contribution unless you opt out.
That is for everyone new that starts July first into TRS for the first time. As we understand it, that they will be automatically enrolled into that plan unless they opt out of it.
Now, if they contribute to a 457, our main 457, there's a maximum contribution there. Does that three percent come from that? Is this something separate? If you opt out, is that because you're going to go into and do a larger contribution to your?
As you can understand, we don't have a, the district, you know, we don't have an architect and stuff. We don't have an attorney and stuff. We outsource and have a contract with experts in those fields. The same is true for our management of 457 and 403Bs. We use TSA, which is a firm that helps manage these things to ensure that both everything that the Board, that we give the Board to approve on a policy and a plan basis is, meets the IRS code and that individuals are following the code and doing accordingly. So, they have, you know, the automatic transfer of information and so forth, and they're kind of, you know, the gatekeeper of sorts of all of that, that structure. That's to keep us and employee, and employees are, you know, out of any problems they may have with the IRS with not following accordingly and that our plan is, you know, meets, meets the IRS code. TRS has been insistent that, and we have Voya, which is the firm that is going to manage the TRS plan as part of, is both in the 403B and 457 plan. The district did approve, the Board approved the 457 plan about two years ago. TRS has insisted that their structure will not be through any of the district's gatekeeping aids that we have, that we've, we've formed up. This is a conversation that has gone on for over a year and through three administrative changes at the head of TRS in that time. It is problematic. We will have to monitor and work with anyone who doesn't enroll in that plan. And if they're enrolled in ours, to monitor that piece because TRS has said, you know, that this is not something that they are going to, you know, maintain or deal with and/or allow us to use our third party. You know, it's concerning. It has a liability issue, obviously. You know, we've, we talked earlier, we're very much in the idea of risk aversion and trying to reduce any liabilities and risks for the district. This creates one. We hope that it won't be a huge one. That people will, you know, pick one or the other. And we'll just have to increase our communication pieces and verification for those who are enrolled in that plan and to monitor and make sure that, you know, if they enroll into another 457 plan, that we're aware of those limits and so forth.
So, ultimately, we're going to, we're just going to have to, before the start of next school year, figure out how we're training.
Correct. And I think we're going to, I mean, there'll be a fair amount of education communication to new employee. Well, we will have to make some changes in how we communicate with new employees in that this is a plan that is going to do, this is what will happen. You need to review your options. This may be a plan that you want to enroll in. We don't give advice on finding, on any of this information, yeah, on any of this piece, because we are not experts. And choose what best is for, you know, what, what best suits you. And I actually think this will be more of a problem for high school districts who may have people who coach in another district and may enroll or get into two different plans and have the possibility of over contribution if they choose to do something with their coaching salary and that sort of thing. I think we will not have quite that dramatic of an issue, just given our.
Okay, thank you.
So, my question's a follow-up to that as well. You talked about taking on a liability and what the liability is, and we'll have to keep an eye on it. But do we have solid mitigation strategies since the district has to keep an eye on it themselves and make sure that things are in line with where they need to be? Like, what, what is our mitigation strategy? How's it going to be implemented?
We, yeah, we will have to, we, I mean, well, first off, well, right now, I don't know. If, if someone came in the second week of January to enroll, I don't know if the plan is actually going to be up and operational and that reporting systems that TRS needs to have operational to communicate to us are working. Because as of yet today, they are not. And they were to be done, I think, in October or November. This is obviously also one of our concerns about putting these things out ahead with some dates before the operate, before they were up, able to be operational. We will, we will have, we will build into our payroll structure. You know, and this is one of the concerns that we have all had with this added liability and added work and so forth. Any, you know, if anyone is into that plan to track what their contribution is on a calendar year basis. And I mean, you know, our payroll person will be the one entering the information, you know, and know, because she gets all of that 457 and 403B information. So, it'll be have to something that we're going to have to create reports and look at on a periodic basis. And in November of each year, look, make, make sure that we're looking that, you know, if someone is about to be or is, you know, tempted or is possibly over in that 457. You can contribute to a 403B and a 457. You can't contribute, but there's a max by, by code number. So, so that's our concern, and we will certainly just have to create some reporting structure around it to make sure that, you know, we don't have someone double contributing. It's just added headache for us.
And yeah, I know that the state's requiring this, and they just haven't gotten all of these pieces in line yet. So, we'll have, unfortunately, it's one of those things, sometimes when the state requires that we're approving something and then waiting to figure out exactly how it's, how it's going to work, which is not always ideal. But we became used to it, unfortunately. So. Anything else? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, the Policy Committee has not met since our last meeting. The Legislative Committee has not met, and neither has the FAC meeting, but the District Leadership Team did on November the fifteenth. Member Weiner?
Brett's going to take it today.
Alright, I'll try my best. Coming out of the last board meeting, we gave the DLT some direction on our opinions on the academic descriptors and the learner behavior descriptors that would go into building out our portrait of graduate and upcoming KPIs. I won't go into the details, but the DLT very much appreciated the Board's input on guidance there. And we went into some of the weeds of how would we actually go and unpack those learned behaviors and academic descriptors through the data that we already have available, instead of we're not creating too many new structures. One of the data sources that are already available to contribute to this are existing report card dimensions. And so, the, one of the next steps coming out of DLT will be that the Curriculum Council, along with the Administrative Team, will be looking at what from the report cards can be used to contribute back to rolling up to our portrait of graduate and other KPIs potentially. So, that's still work to be done. Will we will, at a minimum, be meeting again as a DLT in February. But we might put in a interim meeting if we feel like we need it. Other work that will be happening between now and then is the work that will approve later tonight, potentially, or around our consulting agreement with Ekra. And so, work that happens there, along with the committees, we might have some updates that are worth sharing with. And so work that happens there, along with the committees, we might have some updates that are worth sharing with the DLT prior to February. And so we're looking forward to a recommendation from the Administrative Team on whether to use that space to have a time with the DLT based on what the Curriculum Council, the Administrative Team, the consultants all recommend in terms of a portrait of a graduate and the upcoming KPIs. And so it was an overall very rich discussion. To give you a flavor for it, some of the teaching staff asked questions about how they currently use report cards to communicate with parents and potentially adding a dual purpose of having that same report card data roll back up for district reporting, which it currently doesn't do today. And so recognizing that that could be potentially a different purpose than currently intended requires some either training or communication or potentially both to make sure that when we, if we do choose to use that data for other purposes, that everybody understands where that data is going and that nobody's caught off guard. They were using, you know, a two to indicate this to a family member, but now that two is now rolling up to the district to report out on, you know, aggregate outcomes or subgroup aggregate outcomes. So a little bit more to think through there for sure, but all very much the right and rich discussions that we were expecting. Tracy, anything that I missed?
No, dig it.
Dig it. 1982.
Any questions or comments? I, I do just wanna say, I like the idea that what you're talking about with the, the report cards. I think that, you know, we, we've been spending so much time discussing our standardized testing and, and those, and those benchmarks that we're using and, and using an opportunity to kind of compare and contrast that to other measurements might give us a much fuller view of, of what's going on and and may give us an opportunity to see if there are some disconnects in maybe what we're measuring against and maybe what, what other outside expectations are, so I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, Health and Wellness Committee did not meet as well, and there are no discussion items tonight. So that brings us to the public comment portion of the meeting. This is an opportunity of members of the audience to share public comment with the board, but it is not intended to be a time for members of the public to enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during public comment may be added to future agendas or addressed with administrative staff as appropriate. The board has allocated 30 minutes tonight for public comment. We ask that you keep your comments to three-minute limit to allow everyone the opportunity to speak. At this time, have we received any cards?
No card.
We have not received any cards at this time. Since there's only a few people, is there anybody that would like to make a public comment tonight? Okay. Then at this point, we're gonna move on to our approval of minutes. Are there any suggested revisions to the minutes as presented in the packet of materials? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 8th, 2021 regular board meeting as presented?
Some move.
Second.
All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Weiner?
Aye.
Member Doshi?
Aye.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hannah?
Aye.
Member Harris?
Aye.
Member Olchek?
Lib's team.
Member Hughes?
Aye, the motion carried to approve the minutes of the November 8th, 2021 regular meeting as presented. We have a consent agenda. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the personnel report and financial statements consisting of the list of bills and the summary?
Some move.
Second.
All right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Weiner?
Aye.
Member Doshi?
Aye.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hannah?
Aye.
Member Harris?
Aye.
Member Olchek?
Aye.
Member Hughes?
Aye, the motion carried, the consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. We have a few items up for action tonight. The first one is the Bel Air School Playground. Is there a motion to approve the fundraising plan by the Bel Air Committee for the improve, for improving the playground area at their school?
Some move.
Okay.
All right, I believe we have some folks from that committee here with us today.
We'd like to introduce Principal Borsheld again to discuss the enhancements at Bel Air. Bel Air, much like some of the other schools, have some older playground equipment and also very outdated safety surfacing.
Thank you. We started taking a look at this a couple of years ago, but I wanted to bring and introduce to you Mrs. McGuire. We've been actively up and going with Kevin here, and we've been having a couple of meetings with White, but we're here and ready to talk with you a little bit about some of our ideas tonight. So this is Mrs. McGuire.
Thank you. I'm Krista McGuire. Hopefully, I'm short and sweet after everything we've heard tonight. I did hand out, so you could see closer, we did not have an electronic one of this, so I have a poster. I don't know if it'll show well on here. Probably not. So our Bel Air current play structure is peak gravel, like many that I understand some of the other structures were as well. We also have our playground that is quite spread out, meaning that the play structures are kind of far away from each other, and we just have a lot of extra surfacing. So in our new proposed structure, we're going to reduce the overall footprint. We're gonna switch it to mulch and put a new play structure. Also on here, we have a lot of trees drawn in that we are working with Morton Arboretum to receive 26 donations of trees, which will be really nice for an otherwise very sunny playground that we have going on. So that is our overall plan. We are requesting to begin fundraising, which we've kind of already started, but we're gonna try and get a little more aggressive and hopefully tackle this in the next couple of years, and hopefully before our children are out of Bel Air. Is there any questions on our current status or where we're trying to head?
Any questions?
I'm sure yours and the future students, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Hopefully, we get it done.
Yeah, best of luck. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. McGuire. Of course, Kevin Barton and our team are more than willing to help and work with your team in any way that we can, so please don't hesitate to reach out to us whenever you need anything.
Thank you. Yes, they've been great so far.
All right, any discussion by the board? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Doshi?
Aye.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hannah?
Aye.
Member Harris?
Aye.
Member Olchek?
Aye.
Member Weiner?
Aye.
Member Hughes?
Aye.
The motion carried to approve the fundraising plan by the Bel Air Community for improving the playground area at their school. Next up, we have a Kingsley School Playground. Is there a motion to approve the fundraising plan by the Kingsley Community for improving the playground area in their school?
Some move.
Second.
All right, I believe that we have representatives from Kingsley as well.
So timing just worked out for this tonight to have both groups here, so sorry for doubling up here, but I'd like to introduce Principal Hackett to talk a little bit about our current efforts over at the Kingsley School.
So, you know, honestly, this playground committee has truly been a great reminder of why I'm so fortunate to be principal at Kingsley. We put an interest form out to our committee members, and the one common message that we received was the vision for the playground is truly accessibility for all students. So just such a great reminder that our community is so focused on inclusivity, so that's really what our playground is about. So what you have there, you truly see if you've never been to Kingsley, we have two playgrounds, one known as primary, one known as intermediate. The primary playground is on the north side, intermediate is on the east side. I had to think which way. And so basically, our, we really are talking about both playgrounds right now. Just because we have the committee together, let's build a vision for both. However, the funding that we would be focusing on right away would be for that east side of the playground. So even though right now it's known as intermediate, it would become our kindergarten through sixth grade playground that would be accessible to all students. So we're really in the beginning phases, thanks to White and Company, who's helped build our first concept of this, so the price tag is pretty high right now, so we're gonna be working on, you know, finding ways to bring that down. So for example, right now, we have a lot of ramps and, you know, trying to make it as universal as possible, along with a lot of that rubber surface that is very costly, we've learned. So again, we're gonna be working together to talk about ways to bring that cost down. But again, thank you so much to Kevin, and, you know, just to work with White and Company and our committee. We have one of our committee members in the audience this evening. So truly just looking to the board without permission to move forward with that funding for hopefully a new playground here pretty soon at Kingsley.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Questions from the board or any discussion?
Good luck.
Thanks, Steve. Good luck.
Same comment as before.
No, thank you. And again, same offer to your team over at Kingsley, whatever they need in terms of help from Kevin and in the team, you know, we're here for you, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Weiner?
Aye.
Member Doshi?
Aye.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hannah?
Aye.
Member Harris?
Aye.
Member Olchek?
Aye.
Member Hughes?
Aye, the motion carried to approve the fundraising plan by the Kingsley Community for the improvement of their playground area at their school. Next item is the TRS Employment Participation Agreement for the 457B Supplemental Savings Program. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the TRS Employer Participation Agreement for the 457B Supplemental Savings Program?
Some move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Olchek?
Aye.
Member Weiner?
Aye.
Member Doshi?
Aye.
Member Ellis?
Aye.
Member Hannah?
Aye.
Member Harris?
Aye.
Member Hughes?
Aye, the motion carried to adopt the resolution to approve the TRS Employment Participation Agreement for the 457B Supplemental Savings Program. Next up is the Ekra Consulting Group Contract. Is there a motion to approve the Ekra Consulting Group Contract as presented?
Some move.
Second.
All right, I believe we have Justin.
Thank you. Just by way of brief summary, as Karat mentioned, this is really the extension and a significant next step in the development of our key performance indicators. And so as I've alluded to in previous presentations, we already have an as-needed consulting arrangement with Ekra. They've actually been the ones who have guided some of our work around aligning the key performance indicators with the portrait of a graduate descriptors and really working on those things concurrently to arrive at an outcome that is already aligned in its very nature. And so what this will allow us to do is to ask Ekra to begin the analysis of all of that student data that we do have. This agreement will really focus on the academic descriptors. And, and what it allows them to do is to take our, our data, they use what's called predictive analytics, and so they look at student past performance and really identify student projections down to the individual level much more powerfully than, say, NWA MAP does. MAP gives us a projection based on if student A and student B and student C all start with a RIT score of 236, after 32 weeks, we expect them to reach a RIT score of 242 or 243. What Ekra does is looks at each individual student A, student B, student C, and all of their past performance and develops individualized projections and targets. And then once they have those individualized projections, they can scale that up and down to, from student level to classroom level to district level to subgroups, to any different way we want to look at those predictions. And what that really is going to help us do in the next four, three to four months is to develop key performance indicators and success measurements that are both reasonable and rigorous based on our actual students' performance and what that has looked like. So we're excited to enter into this agreement and harness the power of that predictive model that they can, can use for us.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
I have two. One is around security, and then the other is a contractual, just recommendation prior to approval. So on the security, we've looked at, I know that they're FERPA compliant, et cetera, but we have looked in depth on a due diligence on their security of their platform, right?
Yes, we have. And they also, they de-identify data after, I believe it's 180 days, so they, they only use the identifiable pieces as long as they needed to create those models, and then it becomes de-identified within their system as well.
Okay, so it's 180-day risk, and then, you know, a suggestion to look into their insurance levels, just to make sure they have coverage for breach. But the second item is contractually related. I'm gonna make three recommendations based on my little look at that. It's an annual renewal subscription, so it's a 90-day notice to terminate. I'd say try to get them down to 30 if you can. It doesn't stop me. The other is a annual increase is 3%, but I think maybe ask them for CPI or 3%, whichever is less. It'll help us financially a little bit, even if it's 1% or so. And then they have an incurred expenses for the consulting piece, which I know we're not doing here tonight, but I would suggest saying incurred expenses that we've approved, right? Because right now it doesn't say that. So those three suggestions, but none of them are deal breakers for me. They're just more protective financially.
No, I appreciate that. And for the third one, we have, because it's below, well below the board threshold, we do have a signed agreement on an approved as-needed contractual basis already. That's what we've used thus far, and it does, it does expressly state that we would approve the time going forward. As far as the other two, my, I guess my request would be, could we look at that as, when we renew, when we, you know, when we get to that annual renewal, looking at those pieces? So we wouldn't have to delay the approval of the contract as it stands tonight.
I mean, I'd approve the contract as it stands tonight, but if you can get those things, I think since they're beneficial, do we have to, do we have to not vote on it if it's, right, if it winds us up?
We're voting on this contract, but we can talk about it before we come up for renewal, I think is what he's asking you to do.
So we have to vote on the contract as it stands.
What, what you're suggesting, Melissa, is?
If we can get these additional.
Yeah, what I think I hear you saying is, can you, you vote on the approval of the contract as written, but then go back to the vendor, and if you can get more, you can get more.
Correct. This go around before we sign this contract.
Yes.
Because, you know, it's really hard to negotiate once you're tied into a platform.
Yeah, and but I understand, I mean, we've done business with them before, and this is a, I mean, when we go into to negotiate a contract next year, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but yeah, at the point that we're at right now, we are here to approve a contract.
Just as written.
As, as written, right?
I'll be then voting no on this contract as written.
Okay. Anybody else?
Oh, I just want other question. In the little memo that was included in our packet, there was a section that talked about the opportunity for Ekra to consult with us also on what they call the personalized learner profile, which is more directed towards our learner behaviors in terms of the portrait of the graduate. And I just wanted you to speak a little bit too, why at this point we're choosing not to, to use that portion of the consulting services. I, it does speak to that, we, we hope to do that at a later point, but can you just talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. So at this point, what we are able to do is, we're, we're still able to share the information we have and, and to have them work with us on developing those key performance indicators. What, what we, what we are not yet initiating is the ability to take all of that information and drill down to the individual student level with those predictive analytics like we will for the academic side of learner behaviors. And this ties in with, you know, the way Karat described the conversations that we've been having. We, we have and are very used to using academic descriptors in a number of ways. When we start to look at measuring those other, those learner behaviors, it will likely take us some time institutionally to get to a place where we are building in that regular measurement. So we're, I simply don't want to spend the money until we're ready to access the services, and this is one piece that they're able to prorate for us based on when we join during the year. And so it's really, it's, it's really, it may be that in May, I come back to you and say, we're ready now, and we'd like to do that. I anticipate it will be part of our long-term arrangement with Ekra. I simply don't want to go out, I don't, I'd rather not spend the money until we need to.
Thank you.
Any other discussion points?
Just, just to make sure I understand the deliverables, so they will deliver us what by the end of the term of this contract?
So we will, we, they will be able to deliver first, as I mentioned, some projected key performance indicators, some reasonable targets that then we can discuss as, as, as at the board level, at the District Leadership Team, but they'll be able to begin by providing us some of that information, and then also the ways to monitor it. The, their dashboard is a complimentary part of the agreement with them, and so there will be a platform online where we can view all of that, where we can monitor the progress toward whatever key performance indicator if we set where we can, you know, aggregate by all different groups as we want to. So the most immediate deliver, deliverable really will be on February 28th. John Gata from Ekra and one of our, their other consultants will be here at the curriculum workshop to walk us through, after, which will have already been seen by District Leadership Team, what, what proposed key performance indicators are resultant from this work.
And that those KPIs are for the 21, 22 school year or future school years?
That'll be, that, that, again, that will be our part to determine, basically, they're, they're going to give us some, some idea as to what, what, how can we or how might we define or quantify those success measurements that we've been talking about. We've got the, we have the verbal version of it now, so what, what does that actually, actually look like from a measurement perspective? They will bring that work forward to us in a couple of different stages, and then we'll be able to take what they've given us and decide which pieces we want to use. Once we make that decision, then that, then they'll also be doing the monitoring and the, and the, the update by each trimester or each benchmarking period of all of that data within their system.
So on the deliverable piece, are we approving, my understanding was we were approving the approximately $30,000 subscription fee portion tonight?
Correct.
Are we also approving the 320 per hour ability to, to tap into the consulting services? And, and the ability to do the $20,000 additional piece of it? I can't remember what that's, the S, we're not approving those two pieces, just the subscription.
Correct. The, the, the additional $30,000 component would come back before the board at another point in time, and, and that, not the number at that point will depend on when we initiate that service. And then in terms of the consulting. And then in terms of the consulting piece, no, that's not part of this contract at all. Like I said, we do have, because it's a, it is a, it is, it is a smaller threshold contract. We have already entered into a consulting agreement with ECRRA at the rate of $2,500 per day, which is a pretty standard consulting rate.
So there's a $320 per hour rate in there. I thought that was a consulting rate in the contract.
So that, and again, that we're not, we're not adding that part to this.
Correct. That's, we're not adding that. But, yeah, we're not doing the 320 per hour. Not approving anything related to that.
Correct.
It is in the contract. We're just not contracting for that.
Correct.
Yes. Okay.
That's what I wanted to clarify. We're approving just the $30,000 piece of it, which is the subscription.
Yes.
And just to understand our goals a little bit with this, anytime that we're investing in something like this, my goal is always to make sure that it is for the betterment of what's going on in the classrooms. This initial part is to really help us define and analyze our data and get towards the KPI. And then as we build sort of that, what we've kind of been calling the bridge to get us over into our next strategic plan is to actually utilize this company to help us review and kind of compile this data to give us a better view into how our, how our students are performing so we can come back and provide better service in the long run.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, again, it really gets down to that, that at the individual student level, looking with, with their predictive model to see, you know, and it will continue to apply as we've, as more data is, is added to the model each, you know, or a few times each year. So they will continue to monitor our, not only our KPIs, but anything else that, you know, we can monitor, anything else we determine worthy through that model. So it will be an ongoing deliverable of going, of going forward, being able to continue to adjust and respond to and reflect on, you know, the ways we've reached or not reached key performance indicator targets from a variety of perspectives, from, from, from building level, from subgroup level, from district level, and all those different pieces, all wrapped into the same.
Appreciate that. And so for, for both Member Doshi and Member Weiner, I think in the DLT, I would really love to continue to hear back from you, especially as we get to different deliverable points in creating the KPIs and setting up this bridge, you know, that'll take us into our next strategic plan, is to just hear your feedback on, on the work that this group is doing and, and how it's impacting our ability to, to measure performance of our students and deliver better services. And I think over that two-year period that we're sort of building this bridge, right? Before we go into our next strategic planning process, really take an opportunity to take a deep dive into what we're delivering here and give us good vision as we go to go out to the community in how this data is working for us and how we're utilizing it in the services that, if we're investing in something like this, I want to make sure that it really is delivering for our classrooms.
Yeah, I think that's right. The, the lens to take here is, this is an important step in the right direction of taking a data-informed lens to how we measure ourselves as a district. And so this really should be a learning opportunity for us in this first year of setting KPIs through this, you know, this consulting agreement to figure out whether we feel like it is moving, if we as a board feel like, yep, I can see line of sight to how we can measure ourselves as a district, help provide direction back for particular subgroups. And if we don't feel confident in that, this is a good test case for us to say, let's go back to the drawing board on this component or that component. Or if we feel good about it, that's a really helpful lens into going to the next school year to do it for a full school year and see how we can operationalize it in helping with our professional development Mondays and other spaces that we would be supporting our teaching staff. The, the goal here is to be this bridge, right, to, to take us from where we are today to where we want to be through, for our next strategic plan. So let's use this as an opportunity to, you know, kick the tires a bit, push ourselves and be really ambitious, to be perfectly honest. Let's not, let's not hold back on what things we're asking for. I know a number of folks on the days here have been naming things that they'd like to see in a future state of District 58. Now's the time to name it. We have a consulting agreement with experts that are at the table to work with us on this. They have been, they have framed their work as, we're here to meet you where you are and where you want to be. And so from everything that Justin has shared, this is an opportunity to, it won't be the last, but this is a really good opportunity to take advantage of some of the consulting services that we might be approving tonight.
I absolutely think this tool is incredibly important. I just think there's some things missing. We're dealing with student data. There's no requirement for them to fill out any annual security review, provide any annual SOC 2 reports. None of that exists in the agreement as it stands. So an ongoing security obligation, I didn't see that in the agreement. So the fact that they don't have that contractual requirement, they have a contractual requirement to abide by FERPA, which I really love, but no requirements to ensure themselves against breach, no requirement to, and it's a fair, it's a younger company, and no requirement to provide us with annual security reports, which I think is a very important piece of any software as a service.
Melissa, what was that second acronym that you said SOC 2? Is that what you?
Oh, yeah.
What's, what's?
So a SOC 2 report is a standard security report. It's an audit report that's done on platforms, software platforms. It tells you if there's any deficiencies in the platform, and I'm not an expert in software. I'm just, you know, I work in it. Anceler, I work closely with our IT security team in my other job, my real life job, not my passion project. But yeah, so I think those things, when you're dealing with data, are incredibly important. I think this tool is incredibly important, but I also think securing our student data is incredibly important and making sure that there's pieces in place to protect it. Sorry, Justin.
Any more discussion or questions? Thank you. Melissa, please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Hi.
Member Doshi.
Hi.
Member Ellis.
Name.
Member Hannah.
Hi.
Member Harris.
Hi.
Member Olchek.
Hi.
Member Hughes.
Hi, the motion carried to approve the ECRRA Consulting Group Contract as presented. All right, we have a bid for moving services. Is there a motion to award the bid for moving services to advanced moving and storage of Wood Dale, Illinois for a total cost of $23,500?
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Actually, I just, I just want to kind of just gauge, like, where do we kind of draw the line for doing, moving ourselves versus contracting? When does it become too big for us to handle ourselves?
He's asking Todd if you could just move it off for us.
I think that's a very fair question. Before Todd answers, I'll jump in with just one immediate question in terms of, you know, needing trucks to move this. So first is that, you know, economy of scale, when you're talking about moving as many boxes as we, we obviously don't have a truck, so you would need a, a truck rental. Are people moving it versus hiring someone out to move it? That's where we really look at the timing of the move in particular. Winter break is a time where we deploy our custodial staff, our maintenance staff, to do all those mid-year cleanings and then fix things that we can't fix, you know, when the kids are in school. And so from a personnel lens, you just don't have that same availability as you would, you know, during, during regular. The other thing is because the systems in our school become more and more complex with heating and ventilation and things like that, we don't have as many on-staff maintenance employees working at the district as we once did years ago. And so you, you've got a very thin crew there already, and so that all factors into, when do we determine what to outsource, what not to outsource? Over the last several months, and I want to compliment Jeff Newstad and Kevin on this, you'll see a surplus bid for equipment. They have been thinning out the Longfellow Center and other areas throughout the district, so we would have to move less down the road. Jeff and his team, I think, have now secured over $100,000 in, in equipment that's sold, which is outstanding. And so for us, where we draw the line is, what can we reasonably move in terms of equipment? What would have to go into a truck with personnel's available and all of that, but I'll let Todd finish.
I think Kevin well illustrated all of the items I would have just brought up, and so I don't.
All right. Well, thanks for sharing that thought process. I appreciate it. No, but, but in, in particular, everything that can be moved by us will be moved by us. The majority of things that are left at the Longfellow Center do require the assistance of movers. What we are doing, though, is to save money on moving, is boxing everything that we possibly can on our own with our current staff. So that's why you're seeing a cheaper bid for moving, because literally it's taking the boxes and putting them on. And we did the same thing when we moved over to 2,300 more in the road. I think it's a very fair question, though.
It's also a lot of shelving, taking down shelving, putting back up shelving, and I mean, there's just a lot of staff time. And we also look at, you know, honestly, items like, you know, where's our workers' comp costs and liability in those areas too, where, you know, it, it makes sense to, to put certain things out to outsourced.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? All right, Melissa, please go. Please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Hi.
Member Doshi.
Hi.
Member Ellis.
Hi.
Member Hannah.
Hi.
Member Harris.
Hi.
Member Olchek.
Hi.
Member Hughes.
Hi, the motion carried to award the bid for moving services to advanced moving and storage of Wood Dale, Illinois for a total cost of $23,500. We have surplus equipment. Is there a motion to designate as surplus equipment, the equipment listed in the attached memo?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Melissa, please go roll.
Member Olchek.
Hi.
Member Weiner.
Hi.
Member Doshi.
Hi.
Member Ellis.
Hi.
Member Hannah.
Hi.
Member Harris.
Hi.
Member Hughes.
Hi, the motion carried to designate as surplus the equipment listed in the attached memo. Last up is the dismissal of an ESP employee for reasons other than reduction in force. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution regarding dismissal of educational support personnel employee Angela Criswicki for reasons other than reduction in force?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Olchek.
Hi.
Member Weiner.
Hi.
Member Doshi.
Hi.
Member Ellis.
Hi.
Member Hannah.
Hi.
Member Harris.
Hi.
Member Hughes.
Hi, the motion carried to adopt the resolution regarding the dismissal of educational support personnel employee Angela Criswicki for the reasons, for reasons other than reduction in force. Couple of announcements. We have some dates. Wednesday, December 8th at 3:45 PM will be the Legislative Committee meeting. That'll take place at the Herrick Library. Wednesday, January 5th at 3:45 PM will be another Legislative Committee meeting at Herrick Library. Friday, January 7th at 7:00 AM will be the Financial Advisory Committee, and that'll take place at the O'Neill Library. Monday, January 10th at 7:00 PM will be our next regular board meeting. That'll be right here at O'Neill Middle School. And then Tuesday, January 11th at 7:00 AM will be a Policy Committee meeting at the Herrick Library. The board will now meet in closed session. Is there a motion to move to closed session to discuss the meetings of minutes lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for the purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or the semi-annual review of the minutes is mandated by Section 2.06, that's 5 ILCS 122C21.
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion?
I don't know where I landed.
All right, Melissa, please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Hi.
Member Doshi.
Hi.
Member Ellis.
Hi.
Member Hannah.
Hi.
Member Harris.
Hi.
Member Olchek.
Hi.
Member Hughes.
Hi, the motion carried. The board will now move into closed session after a short recess. Let's meet up at 9:00 PM.